At this time, I would like to call the February 2022 meeting of your Hanover Borough Council to order. Start by requesting that we all stand and recite in unison our Pledge of Allegiance. And we follow that with a brief moment of silence.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and please be seated.
I would like, at the moment of silence or immediately following, for us all to think about Brian Fuentes, one of our co-council members. As we all know, he's down with COVID, and he's back in the hospital this evening.
Oh, no.
So he's in Gettysburg.
No, he's back.
Yeah. So any prayers? Is that correct, Tony? Thank you. Prayers, good thoughts. He could certainly use. So, thank you.
Thank you, and good luck to Brian. Secretary Felix, your assistance with the calling of the roll, please.
Mr. Fuentes?
Mrs. Spunk?
Here.
Mr. Greenholt?
Here.
Mrs. Greenholt?
Here.
Mr. Hagberg?
Here.
Mr. Press?
Here.
Mr. Lockard?
Here.
Mr. Reckart?
Here.
Mr. Rowland?
Here.
Dr. Rock?
Here.
Solicitor Schultes?
Here.
Mayor Whitman?
Here.
Manager Dunford?
Here.
Secretary Felix, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Secretary Felix. Let the record reflect that council did participate in executive session lasting this evening approximately from 6:15 p.m. to 7:03 p.m. prior to this meeting that we find ourselves in now, under respective matters of these, excuse me, under respective sections of the Sunshine Act. Those sections being real estate matters relative to 229 Carlisle Street, litigation matters relative to Stabler versus Borough of Hanover, collective bargaining matters relative to Asme White, and personnel matters relative to non-union personnel change in Water Resource Department. This time, I will open up the floor for public comment. Anyone present with us physically in the room is invited to speak first. We ask that you come forward, identify yourself, and be recorded. Seeing none at this time, I'll ask Community Media's help to open us up to our electronic followers.
If you're joining us via Zoom, you can now unmute yourself if you'd like to address There's one unmuted, but not speaking.
No one's speaking? Okay. We'll give you a second chance at the conclusion of the meeting for the second public comment portion of the meeting. Closing that, the Chair respectfully requests a motion from a counselor to approve the items on the consent agenda.
Still moved.
Been moved by Counselor Lockard. Is there a second? Seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Turning over to Page Two, we will move into the presentations. Looks like we have two this evening. Who's here from the summer rec program about the YMCA? Oh, there they are. Welcome. The floor is yours.
Come to the table.
Come to the table.
Yep, there's a microphone here.
I get a front center. For those of you that don't know me, I'm Kami Bish, and I am the CEO to the Hanover Area YMCA. And this is Lisa Patello. I'm the Child Care Director at the YMCA. First and foremost, we just want to say thank you so much for allowing us to come in and run the program last year, and we look forward to the opportunity to do that again this year. We have a budget presented and also a contract in place. We just need to tweak probably some dates that have been sent back and forth, and then I won't steal Lisa's thunder, and so I will allow her to speak about all the wonderful things we'd like to do this summer.
So last year, the program ran in the evenings, and we found that the attendance was not great. So this year, we'd like to change the program for it to run in the morning from 9:00 to 11:30. We think we'll get better attendance that way. Also, it was really warm in the evening, so we canceled quite a few evenings just because of the heat. This year, we wanted to add some different things to the program than last year. So if you look at the budget, we have $14,000 in there for our staff, $12,000 for administrative staff, and then we were thinking of doing bag lunches this year as well, just because a lot of the children are home on their own and probably aren't able to make their own lunches. So we thought if we provided some lunches to them at the end of the time that they're with us at 11:30 to go home, that they would at least get a meal that day. We also, at the end of the program, wanted to provide backpacks for the children with some books in there and some school supplies. We wanted to provide a reptile program, so we've already reached out to someone who would come in with reptiles and do a little show for the children. We have a magician as well on board that we would like to have. And we're also partnering with the YW. They did some programs last year. They did some music and performing arts. So we, again, will be partnering with them to provide some of those things. And that's about $950 for that. Human resources and background checks. So this year, we're going to take on the hiring. Last year, the Borough took care of hiring the staff. This year, the YM is going to do that. So we would have to provide background checks for the new staff that we hired. And then, since we have a great pool in our facility, we would like to take the children swimming as well every other week. So there's some money in there also for bus driver fuel and lifeguards. So the total budget comes to $37,800 for the eight-week program.
Now, would the programs then be at the parks, or would they be at the YM?
Yes. They're at the parks. So this year, we're proposing Deguy, Washington Elementary, Myers Ave., and Elm Ave.
So the kids would come there. We would have waivers and things that parents would have to sign. So if we do transportation or certain activities, they would be aware of those activities, and then try to create a culture of programming and give them opportunities to see other things across the Hanover area, like the YMCA, and then even opportunities maybe to go to Littlestown because we do manage the outdoor pool there, so that they have an opportunity maybe to go there as well.
I think you guys did a great job with this last year. It was, I don't know how we, yeah, we really, really did.
Thank you.
And have a good one.
Yeah, you do. Well, it's the business you're in, and I think this is something unique that we, as Hanover Boroughs, do.
It's a nice collaboration.
Absolutely. And wasn't in our proverbial wheelhouse, but you guys have taken it over, and it seems to be great. I don't know, comparative cost-wise, is it about?
This is less expensive.
Than when we did it ourselves?
Yes. We didn't hear that.
Could you tell me the parks again?
Can you list the parks again?
Just the parks again.
Sorry, we're fast talkers here. We're so sorry.
I speak really quickly. I'm from Massachusetts. We talk fast.
That's okay. I talk fast, too. I just didn't hear.
We're from Hanover. We just listen slow.
Okay. Point taken. The Deguy Avenue, Washington Elementary, Myers Avenue, and Elm Avenue. So that's a change from last year. Last year, we did Hanover Street, but we had some issues there at that particular park with just the children there and the families there. So we prefer not to do that one.
Well, there isn't any parks at this end of town. Not on any Hanover Street, not on any, you know, elementary school or that other playground at the end. I don't know what that's called.
Myers is the one that's almost in part of San Adams County, isn't it?
Yeah, there aren't any parks at this end of the town. I guess I just have a little bit of a problem with that. I mean, what about those kids?
And I think there's some reason with AJ, right? I think you're doing some rehab at certain parks, so then we kind of took some off the list.
He is doing some stuff at West Hanover Street.
Because we weren't sure if we could utilize them, so we picked the ones that we knew would be good to go. But we could change that if, you know, the timeframe changes for the rehab, you know, the rehab or construction at the parks, we could shift. It's just we went in with the list we have because of that, I think.
I would really appreciate if you take a look at that, if that's a possibility. So kids at this end, at this end of town could take advantage of it because, you know, because they couldn't drive there, and it is a local park program.
A couple of years ago, I was on the, what do you call it, the Parks and Recreation Committee or whatever. From, I was the school district representative, and Dave Fry, and I hate to ask people to do stuff that aren't here, he did a really cool heat map that, out of Google with all the students' addresses, that showed the ages of the kids and the adjacency to the parks, so you could visualize who was where, and it made it real obvious what age programs should be at what parks. Maybe we could reach out to him and have him confirm sort of what you're saying and redo that again.
Well, if AJ's working on that park, it doesn't matter. I mean, he is working on rehab in that. So maybe if it becomes available.
I have to agree with Barb.
Okay.
That we have to have a park open at each area of town, east, south, north, east, and west, okay?
Mm-hmm.
And to have it all going in one direction really makes it harder for parents who could get their children to a concurrent playground, say on the south side, when they would have to go to the north side or the east side, okay? So if you would take that into consideration, I would appreciate it very much.
I'm gonna let AJ jump in here. I think he has something useful to add.
There's construction scheduled for West Hanover Street Playground. So that's one of the reasons we have to try and avoid that for the summer. Basically, this program was on life support, especially, you know, once COVID came, and the good folks here with the Y have really helped revive this. The plan is to continue to expand this back to the way it used to be, include a lot more parks. We're just trying to keep the whole thing going for right now.
I'm fine with that.
Can we do it over on Bear Avenue?
We have done it there, but that's also one that's slated for a possible revamp of equipment there through the summer.
Oh, okay. Thank you, AJ.
Sure.
So we're open. If that changes and timeline changes, we're not married to it. We can shift and make that shift. That's fine for us.
We're just happy you're doing it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I really agree with that. It's great.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, ladies.
So we will have.
Will you report back then with, at the end, with numbers, that kind of thing? Will you report back at the end of the summer with Merza kids?
Oh, absolutely.
I think you did last year.
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, no problem.
So we will have an agreement on the next agenda.
I just want to make one comment. Yes, sir. We will be running summer school, sorry, the summer enrichment program.
We get it. Watch what you say.
At Washington. So you might just want to make a reach out because there might be some dates there that.
What? Okay.
So that means we're going to have school there.
Yeah, it'll be on the playground and doing other things. Yeah.
Right. So they might be on the playground, and it might be tough to do Washington.
Okay.
They'd be enriching.
We can always look at those dates and say that's an off-site timeframe, depending on.
It's like eight weeks.
A long off-site timeframe. Okay, all right.
Just call over to the school and ask.
We'll figure it out.
So that might not work.
No problem.
What time would those programs start in the summer for the children?
It's 9:00 to 11:30 in the morning.
Okay. No evening programs at all?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we shifted that just due to attendance. Like, last year, we tried one thing. This year, we're going to try something else and try to keep increasing enrollment and hopefully get it right.
Well, the only reason I said that is that when you hold it in the evening, when the temp, well, it's cool in the mornings, too.
Right.
Okay? But, you know, with them working on the streets and everything, I was just thinking that if, like, at Hanover Street, okay, if that was held in the evening instead of the morning while the men are working, they close off at four to five o'clock or four, I think it's four o'clock. I know it's four o'clock. So that's the only reason I was looking. You know, that time limit.
Yeah.
And it's going to be hard because they're going to be everywhere, you know, doing the roads.
Yeah. So we'll have to figure, we'll shift any way we can.
Okay.
Thank you.
Again, thank you. Moving along on our agenda, I believe our next presentation is by Director of Engineering, Mr. Mainz, on the Eisenhower Drive Extension.
Brushtown Bypass.
The B, Brushtown. I'm sorry.
Is there a motion on the agenda then for the YMCA?
I'll make a motion to approve the summer program as presented.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you.
Hold the phone. Okay. Since there is a motion of business, I didn't know we were at that portion of the meeting. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Director of Engineering, Mr. Mainz, your presentation.
I don't have a fancy presentation in terms of slides and all that sort of thing. Basically, I think the best way to handle this is kind of break it in two pieces here. So this topic looks at two different things. One, it looks at this council and its position and letter of support towards the Eisenhower Drive Extension project. The second piece of it, then, is to further that discussion with what your plans would be as far as the upcoming hearing that will be held next week. So with regard to the letter, this isn't a new topic. Certainly, you've heard me talk to you about it before. This council initially issued a letter saying that they were not in favor of the TSM option. They then came back a couple of months ago and said not only were they not in favor.
Just for clarity, because some of the council members are new, would you define?
Yes. So the TSM option, so when we talk about the Eisenhower Drive Extension, there are basically three options that we're talking about. We always talk about one, which is called the no-build option, which is basically the do-nothing option. That means we just let life go on as it is. The TSM option is one that looks at saying, okay, what if instead of building roadways, we go in and we look at all the traffic signals, and we add additional lanes, and we try to mitigate some of the traffic concern by changing some of the geometry of the things we have, but we're not necessarily building a new infrastructure to try and divert or to clean up things. And so the final option, then, which is really what we call the 5C option, and the 5C option is the one that really is what is subject for the hearing next week, and that is the option that looks at basically rerouting that traffic around the downtown so that it's not coming through the downtown. And so the hearing now, it's a mandate of the EA report, so the environmental assessment report that was completed is now on public display. There's a copy of it upstairs. It's on the website. Certainly, we put out there that it was there for people to come in and take a look at it, offer comments on it. And with that, there will be a hearing to take basically testimony. It will be a stenographer. There'll be testimony given, and those people who choose to speak will come, and they'll speak whether they support it or they're in opposition to it. And also, there's an avenue of submitting written correspondence. And at this point in time, that's really the first matter in front of you, I think, is having council support the letter that has been prepared, that is in support of the alternative 5C, and lists for the agencies that are seeking your input, what some of the benefits that you would see as the borough are of that. So that's really the first one. I'm certainly not going to pretend to be an expert on this. I have read enough to make sure I understand it to be able to advise you some on it. There will likely be some sort of a presentation, I would believe, at the hearing. The website is really, really good as far as providing a bunch of information timelines. The reports are all up there, so certainly you can kind of do that proverbial deeper dive into it if you choose, but that's where we're at at this point in time.
The website is very informative. It's long and lengthy.
It is, yes.
And it does show you all the stuff they have to do to get to this point, which is a lot of our amazing tax dollars at work, you know. But it's pretty, it's pretty interesting when you look at all the assessment they do to get to this point. I mean, I think they, I think they're on the right track.
Well, and I think to clarify, too, the point of the hearing is not to say, you know, should we do 5C, or should we do TSM, or should we? It has been identified that 5C is the preferred alternative. The hearing is based on your public input on that specific route. I know there's been some chatter and discussions about, oh, you know, we're still talking about which alignment we like. We're not at that point. We're at a point now where the environmental assessment report has come back, and it has said that 5C is the preferred as far as the study is concerned. And now it's time for the public to weigh in on what their thoughts are on it. And then collectively, the public comment, as well as the EA study, will be put together, and that's when the decision-makers will decide how best to move forward. If the thought process, and I know certainly some people said, oh, well, it's not in our municipality. We'll let things alone. You know, it is what it is. That's a very, very dangerous proposition, especially for the borough, because for you, what it would mean is if the only version that's heard is opposition to it, likely then you're going to be left with one of the other options, the TSM or the no-build, and those are both really represent some, they're very problematic, I believe, for the borough.
So in essence, all three options are still technically on the table?
Not so much. Yeah. They become, two of them become sort of default. If the 5C is not ultimately moved forward, then they're going to have to default to one of those other two, either the do-nothing option or the TSM option. And certainly, for reasons that are listed in the report I gave you, there are, there are a lot of significant concerns with the TSM option because it does involve public, it involves property takings. It has some impacts. It could potentially remove some properties from the tax roll. And from the borough's perspective, that is very problematic.
Those other alternatives don't really meet the purpose and the goal of the whole thing either. I mean, they don't really, they kind of really divert traffic. The other two options don't meet the goal of the whole study, so it only makes sense to do the one they're doing.
Especially the do-nothing. I mean, the no-build option is just a recipe for disaster.
Yeah.
And I think the other important point to the thing is, you know, certainly, this has been talked about for years and years and years. And if you go to the Adams County side, I mean, the Adams County Office of Plane Development has been talking about this for 10 to 12 years, probably prior to all of this. It has all culminated to this point now. If this doesn't happen, there isn't a do-over. There isn't another time where somebody will pick this back up again in five years and decide whether we like it then. If this doesn't happen, it will not be brought back up again. And we've heard that from several officials.
Is there really, is there insurance of funding, or is it still based on federal funds?
Yeah. I believe it's based on federal funding, yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mainz. At this point, council will transition into its more business portion.
Some actions related to.
There's some action there.
Okay. Go ahead.
I actually listed the actions in the presentation area.
Oh, you wanted the actions. Yeah.
So it's regarding the letter, also the plans for the public hearing next week. We do have a slot for testimony, and we need to know if you're going to, if there's going to be, you know, some testimony from Borough Council or the mayor.
I'm certainly willing to make a motion to approve the letter.
Okay. I was going to ask, go ahead.
Sure, yeah.
We have a motion for aye, the letter approval. Is there a second?
Second that.
Discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Is there a motion for double aye?
Still moved.
Double aye is to discuss plans for the public hearing. Do you have a representative, for example?
Thought we were going to strong-iron someone to speak.
So would the person just really read our letter?
De facto, a person I would recommend that the mayor speaks, but I think we have to decide whether we choose to speak when we're there. Just so everybody knows, we canceled our next week's meeting, which is when the meeting it saves is regarding the bypass, so that we can have the discussion this evening, but also set, so that all of us can intend to be at this meeting next week. I think we should listen to what goes on, and when we're there, make some sort of a decision. Sue, if, you know, we, I'm happy to help you, but some sort of a, something together.
She could just read the letter.
That may be it, or a summary of the letter may be appropriate. Or we may feel that's, you know, nothing more needs to be said. I think we need to kind of read the tea leaves at the moment.
I think Sue would be a great representative for us, and I think we should all make an effort to be there.
Absolutely.
And support Sue, and maybe Sue reads the letter. Unless anybody else comes up, does that have any magical words to say?
No, or maybe just some.
She reads the letter. Yeah, I think that'd be great.
Pieces of it.
And she could refer to the fact that the Borough Council is here, and I'm representing them, you know, that kind of thing.
And we all voted in favor of it.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, I'd just add that I think we should confine it to the letter, because any comment that is requested will not be from council, because council will not either have the time nor the venue or opportunity to discuss its response. So if they're requiring that, if it means more to have our letter written, sounds like the consensus opinion is the mayor would be our representative. If not, we're giving them our letter.
Sue, Hannah, are you okay with that?
Sure.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Got what you need?
Yep, that's what we need.
Okay. Now, we'll move into standing committees, starting with Vice President Rowland, Workshop Finance.
Okay. Yeah, I got a lot here, so let's try and be quick here. On the purchasing, consideration of a motion to take the following actions in regard to the joint municipal bids. Reject all bids for snow and rock salt in the bulk quantities. Reauthorize the bidding of the snow and rock salt in bulk quantities. Award joint municipal bids for materials and supplies as set forth in engine attachment A per the bid specifications. Do we want to vote on these individually? How do you want to handle this?
Just do it collectively.
Just go through the whole thing.
All right.
So motion.
Well, Counsel Rowland was the motion. You'll be the second.
Hold on a second.
Counsel Frank.
Okay, sorry.
Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
One staff comment is that at your place is the cumulative costs of this beyond what's in the budget, and as you can see, it's significant. It's approximately, I think, $236,000, and you can see that it's broke, $266,000. It looks like this, and it's broken into the departments that are affected, wastewater, water, and public works. This will probably require a transfer from reserves probably at the end of the year. We'll get the timing right. So just.
So we better hope we're not using a lot of salt.
Well, you need to know this, so.
Right. The percentages are terrible.
I would just make sure people really take a look at the inventory and really order what they really need due to the increased costs, because it's pretty bad.
Okay, I'll make a note of that.
It is a good point. I don't know what we have in inventory, and I'm not sure AJ may have a feel for it, but we should look at how much of that is, could we conceivably consume of what we already own?
Just watch it closely. Yeah, right.
And you'll need that information, but this also, you should remember that we have budgeted holding the line at 2019 pricing for non-personnel costs, and that is not going to be possible in 2023.
Yeah. Okay, Dr. Rowland? All right. Interim Borough Treasurer, Borough Manager Updates and Actions. Staff to provide updates on the following items. Unfilled Personnel Vacancies, 2021 Health Insurance Dividend, Finance Director Position. B, Consideration of a Motion to Approve the Proposal from UPMC for an Employee Assistance Program, approximate annual cost of $3,500. Item C, Consideration of a Motion to Approve Personnel Changes in the Water Resource Department. Have a motion?
Can we take these individually?
We can take these individually.
Thank you.
So, okay, so I have motions for both. We'll deal with the first one first, then. That being the $3,500?
There's staff updates before that that are important to have. We're combining two meetings, so it's a little complicated, but go ahead.
So that would be, A would be the first one with.
Correct. Unfilled Personnel Vacancies, the dividend, and the Finance Director Position.
Is there a second for that?
This is an emotion. This is.
This is an action item for Nanda.
We're just trying to advise you, like we do in workshops usually, of information that you need to have.
Yes.
So Amy will do that for you for A.
Oh, we're doing it now.
We can do it now.
Okay.
She's here and ready.
Didn't get my memo. Go ahead.
So as you guys have read probably, hopefully, I just wanted to give you an update of some things that have been ongoing. One of those is that we have some vacancies that are, at this time, not being filled. I wanted to make you guys aware of that because I didn't want to only come to you when there's vacancies that we're trying to fill. I want you guys to know that we are really assessing the need to fill each individual vacancy as they come up. I think that got kind of lost last year when we did have a vacancy that was in 2021.
Sandings to Retrition.
Yeah, that we did not fill, and so we never really brought that to your attention, that there was one that we didn't fill. Right now, we have two that we're not filling at this time. They're both on a kind of wait-and-see pattern to see what happens. If the departments can survive without those positions being filled, if we get to a point where there's a lot of overtime, or it starts to cause issues, then, of course, we'll bring it back. But as of right now, those positions are not being asked to be filled.
Can I ask a question, Amy?
What are they?
On the.
What was in our stuff?
On the rowboat calls, how are people adjusting to that?
We've made, since we activated it, we've made a lot of different changes to it. It's changed almost daily. So we're trying to work out all the quirks. I think that where we have it now is working well. A lot of people were very confused about accounts payable, so they were, which would be like vendors who are looking to pay bills, and a lot of residents thought that that's where they needed to go to have questions about their bills. So now that we've got that sorted out, and we just took that option out, I think that that's, it's working a lot better.
Okay, thank you.
I appreciate the other people working to fulfill, fill the slot or the jobs of the person who may not be there, and being kind enough to take a look at that and see if some of those responsibilities can be absorbed. That's good. Thank you.
Well, the second thing is the health insurance dividend. We, as you know, we participate in a consortium through a company called Benicon, and that's who we purchase our health benefits through. And it's a hybrid self-insured plan, which means that we pay into the pot, so to speak. Our claims are paid out of that pot, and then whatever money is left over at the end of unused premiums, we get some of that back. That allows us to reduce our overall cost for health insurance. That allows us to reduce our overall cost for health insurance. Obviously, we know that's a huge expense, so when we see that we got to the end of the year and we're getting a large portion of that back, that's great news. So, yeah, that was just, just to let you know where we're at with that. The next thing is the employee.
Does that amount we're getting back offset, like, the amount we're getting back as a percentage to the premium increase? Do you know the one versus the other? And I'm putting you on the spot now, but could you figure that out and give us a feel for that?
I can let you know what the.
The overall premium's going up by, I don't know, a half a million dollars, and we're getting back $400,000 or whatever, but, you know, that's, that's good news when it's good news, but we can also get the inverse in future years.
Right.
Thank you.
And the, the good news as far as our budget is concerned is that we, because it was budgeted conservatively, you know, that it is, it is a good bit more than what we were expecting, so that's, that's good.
Amy, was that closer to two, was it $275,000?
Yeah, $275 is what it was, is what we budgeted for, and so, yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. The, the next item is employee assistance program. This is something that has been requested specifically by our, by our union groups, asking for employee assistance programs, which kind of work with our health insurance. We're hoping that this will also reduce the number of claims that go through the health insurance. It's actually less expensive for employees, for us to pay for this kind of package deal through the EAP, and then employees have the ability to use those services, and it doesn't charge it against a health insurance claim. So it works together with it. The total cost is very minimal overall, and it allows for counseling services, you know, financial advice, all kinds of different.
Amy, do we allow that insurance to cover it first, and then this program would kick in at the, at the, after that program is used up?
This is an incremental. This is incremental by itself.
Yeah, this program, well, what, how it should work is if somebody has an issue, they would call the EAP first. The EAP would refer them to services, which may mean using their health insurance, but they're going to refer them to the services that are provided through the EAP program first.
Oh, they will?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And then the last item is the status of the finance director position. We are still looking. We temporarily took the ad down and then relisted it on Indeed to kind of refresh our candidate pool. We have two really good, strong candidates right now that we're, we're vetting to see if they could possibly come take over.
Yeah.
Relieve me. So I just wanted to give you that. And then the last item is, of course, the personnel changes in Water Resources, which.
And I'll give a motion for that when you're ready. So we need a motion on B for the approval of the UPMC.
I would make that.
Yep, I'm using that as a standing motion. So getting back to point of order of the business, we have the motion for B. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Second, Counselor Funk. Any further discussion warranted or needed?
I just have one question.
This is on 2C you're referring to, Bill.
If we do approve this, and I'm pretty sure we will, how will the employees all know, how will they know that now we have this?
2C.
UPMC has pamphlets that will go out in their paychecks, and then it will also be available on the Employee Intranet, so they'll receive an email letting them know that the services are available when they're effective.
Super, thank you.
So can we get a motion for all three together on point two, A, B, and C?
We need a motion for 2B.
2B.
And I need to read 2C to you because the motion was created by a prior discussion.
Yes, so right now, I'm going with the motion and the second for 2B. All in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'm Agent Dunford would like to say a brief comment about item 2C.
So 2C, the motion would be, it's a motion to compensate Chad Arnold, Assistant Director of Public Works, with a stipend of $2,000 a month through August 31, 2022, to assist the Director of Water Resources. I see a motion. Approve them.
Okay. We'll take your motion as the first motion. Second, Counselor Greenhold. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
The next matter I could handle, because it's, at this point, a matter for discussion, and it's probably good that we bring it up at this meeting and act on it next meeting. So what we've learned is that with ARPA money, of which we have 7.5 million, we can, since we did not get 10 million, program it into the 2022 budget to offset the costs of police and fire services. So that will require a budget modification resolution, which we are in the process of preparing for next meeting. Then we would also, at the same time, we would provide a motion to create a capital reserve account. If you recall, in July of last year, Borough Council approved a critical projects list of all of the things that you would like to see done, streetscape buildings, all of those things that we, you know, the big wish list. And the purpose of that critical projects list was to guide us and to guide the new Hanover Economic Development Corporation in potentially packaging ARPA funds with grant funds and other resources to move the borough forward and to maintain our buildings.
The money and the more.
So there will be two actions next month for you to consider. One is a budget modification, so that the ARPA funds would be spent, all, half of it this year and half next year, which would reduce a lot of administrative requirements, and then to create a fund with what falls out of that, because that would mean there'd be excess money in the budget to create a capital reserve, which you can appropriate money for other, for building projects and other things that are defined, so.
For clarification's sake, B, there's the income and the spending side. On the spending side, nothing's changing.
Nothing's changing.
And we're not spending any more or any less.
No.
Because of this.
Right.
Okay, we're bringing this in.
But we're substituting ARPA money for budget money.
For general fund money.
So this will, in theory, reduce the projected deficit?
No, it's, it's, it would be equal, so.
What are you gonna have those costs again the next year? What are you gonna use to substitute next year? I assume there's probably extra money being supported in the budget.
See, I was under the impression this money was being set aside for all of, all of the capital projects we were wanting to do. I'm not sure where the three and a half million for the police car.
Well, this, this will effectively do that without a timeframe and without additional reporting requirements. So you move, this is, this is the suggestion of a couple of our consultants. You move the ARPA money in to the 2022 budget. You take that, what it supplants in terms of general fund money and create a capital reserve, and that lives forever until you spend it. So you've achieved the same thing with fewer, with a lot less red tape.
It's a wash.
It's a wash.
I get the capital reserve.
That sounds different, yeah.
It sounds like a federal shell game.
Yeah.
It is, basically. We're gonna move it in through the income statement, and then with the excess, we'll move that into a reserve.
So they can say that they funded the police.
And then it skates all the requirements or the additional administrative requirements.
Oh, I get it now.
It's, it is sort of a.
It is a shell game.
It's legal, it's, but it's, it simplifies.
It's their way of accounting, just like they do in Washington already.
Okay, we need a motion?
No, next one.
It's discussion.
Oh, sorry, next one.
Next one.
So that's just reading into, reading into the public for, for comment, okay?
All right.
So that puts us on item four.
Yes, please.
Consideration of a motion to approve ordinance 2317 to fund Main Street Hanover for 2022 as appropriated in the 2022 general fund budget. May I have a motion, please?
You are the motion.
You are the motion.
Okay.
May I have a second? Second. Discussion.
That's $40,000 for this year. Yes.
It's in the budget.
Yes.
It's in the budget.
It's in the budget. It's in the approved budget.
It's just an order.
I don't have it memorized.
Any, uh.
Really?
Any other questions? Okay, I'll ask Secretary Felix to help me with a roll call vote here.
Ms. Funk?
The amount I don't agree with, I'll have to say no.
Mr. Greenhold?
Yes.
Mrs. Greenhold?
Yes.
Mr. Hagberg?
Yes.
Mr. Kress?
Yes.
Mr. Lockard?
Yes.
Mr. Ricard?
Four.
Mr. Rowland?
Yes.
Dr. Rupp?
Yes.
Okay, we have eight in favor of, and one against, so the motion passes.
Okay. Mr. Rowland?
Item five, consideration of a motion to approve Resolution 1338 to allow the sale of 11 surplus vehicles slash equipment at auction.
Second. Any discussion?
With vehicles. AJ?
So Counselor, this was part of the Capital Vehicle Improvement Program, or Replacement Program, that we've spoken about since, I guess, August and the previous year. So these are the vehicles that you folks have originally approved to go to auction. We just have to do it by resolution.
So you're expecting what on recompense to the borough, about $2,000?
By doing it this way, and thanking, very appreciative of council of letting us run this program in-house, where we took it over from where it used to be, we expect instead of the typical $2,000 to $5,000 intake, I don't want to get too far ahead of myself, but I think we're looking into the tens of thousands of dollars now for what we used to get pennies for. And that will be by the end of the month.
Right. What vehicles are we total, what are we, what are we turning in for auction?
So it's, it's, like I said, what we talked about in the Capital Vehicle Plan, a 1980 forklift, 1998 backhoe with a broken boom, 1996 trash trailer, 2011 truck with 112,000 miles on it, rusty frame. It's basically those kind of things. Blown engine. We took it to a website that specializes in municipal sales, but it's open to the public, and you get, you attract people from all over the country then.
Could we get a copy of that?
We have a much bigger and better turnout than typically.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Yeah, was the website address in the stuff that was sent to us?
Correct, it's in both the resolution and the legal ad that will go in the newspaper. It's municipalbid.com.
So that's in the packet as well?
Correct.
Okay, so it's in your documents?
Oh, it is not on this part of the packet.
Oh, it's not?
But it was in the packet with the resolution and the legal bid.
Okay.
What was it again?
It's not on the actual agenda.
Somebody said it was Suttonbid.com.
Let's see if I can find it.
Municipalbid.com.
Municipalbid.com. Thank you.
Have a motion and a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, item six, consideration of a motion to approve ordinance 2318 to amend the Recreation Board composition to increase the number of board members from five to seven.
Second.
I'm gonna continue with the second and third, well, at least the second one. And item seven, consideration of a motion to appoint Andrea Hutton, 232 Baltimore Street, to the rec board for a term ending.
Hang on, I gotta, I gotta do them separately by vote, so we're still on six. You made the motion, I heard Counselor Lockard seconded it.
All right.
Secretary Felix, will you help me do a roll call on this one?
Sure. Ms. Funk?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Greenhold?
Yes.
Mrs. Greenhold?
Yes.
Mr. Hagberg?
Yes.
Mr. Kress?
Yes.
Mr. Lockard?
Yes.
Mr. Ricard?
Four.
Mr. Rowland?
Yes.
Dr. Rupp?
Yes.
Passes with mine in favor and you in the against.
Mr. Rowland, item seven?
Consideration of a motion to appoint Andrea Hutton, 232 Baltimore Street, to the Recreation Board with her term ending 12/31/2025.
So motion.
I have a second from this end of the table. Counselor Funk, I believe, discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item eight, consideration of a motion to appoint council member blank to the Recreation Board for a term ending at the end of their elected term. I.
Sounds like a volunteer is required here.
Looks like we're.
I would be interested in doing that. I have a little knowledge of children and playgrounds.
Where?
I picked up some along the way.
Sounds like the motion includes the name of Dr. Rupp.
Second.
Blank Rupp. This is blank Rupp.
Okay, let me rephrase that. Can, yeah, consideration of a motion to appoint Dr. Barbara Rupp to the rec board forever.
Seconded formally by Counselor Kress. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations.
Thanks.
I'm gonna one-up you on nine.
Oh, yeah.
Consideration of a motion, or discuss appointment, excuse me, process for replacement of Planning Commission Member Scott Rowland for a term ending July 31, 2025. I submitted my resignation to the Planning Commission effective the end of February as of taking on the vice president role, because I don't have enough time to do both.
Agent Dunford, would you like to help start the discussion?
Yes, we do not have a specific process for recruiting and appointing members of our boards and commissions. You'll see later in the agenda, and that maybe you want to discuss this item later, that we would like to ask you to refer that to the Governance Committee so that we have a way to do that. So, you know, we can, we can actually take this up later. Yeah, and I agree, and I think it's a very good place for it to go, to the Policy Committee.
In the interim, can people submit their name or resumes to, to the manager?
Would you like us to advertise for this?
Do we have people that show up for the lifetime?
I think we should, but I also think that, that planning has to have some type of expertise, you know, for the person that is going to go on that committee.
Agreed.
It would help, you know?
Well, I was on that committee, I had no expertise when I got, when I left. If I had known anything.
Well, no, no, I just, it's a good, it's a good idea to have some knowledge, Barb, because you know, if you don't, and you're just sitting there wasting idle space, it's not helping anybody on the planning committee.
You have a lot more experience than you give yourself credit for.
So I know it's a little advertised on, he has the ability.
I'd like to let Solicitor Sholtest comment.
This is one of the types of organizations that council can appoint one of its, um, to it. So since Mr. Rowland's going off, you may consider among your pool as opposed to going outside.
We do have Counselor Hagberg still on the Planning Commission, too.
All right.
It's, it's, it's up to council, and you can appoint as many as two, which you have had for years.
Wasn't this also the one that we could have an alternate on, that we don't?
Could you?
Could you?
Or was that, is that me?
Was it zoning or was it planning? I thought it was planning. We didn't have.
An alternate.
Zoning has one, that's an alternate.
Right, 'cause there's only three.
Zoning has one.
Why don't, why don't we give it a month for governance to see what they can come back with before we, before we put the cart before the horse too much? So, okay. Thus we'll end the discussion and we'll move into.
All right, well, that ends my report.
As I was saying.
Mr. Ricart, thank you.
And then your report, thank you. We'll move into, uh, engineering, planning. Councillor Hagberg, please.
Thank you. Consideration of a motion to receive the draft amendment of the Hannover Borough zoning ordinance involving short-term rentals from the planning commission and to set a timetable for respective public hearing, hearings.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor of the consideration signify by saying aye, please?
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Mr. Hagberg?
Update on working draft of rental inspection ordinance and to provide direction to staff on the next steps.
I can help you on that one, Chuck.
That's for Eric.
I'm looking at going, there's no motion here.
That's, uh, Mr. Mainz.
Yeah, so this council has asked previously for my department to work on kind of looking at the rental inspection program. If you recall, I had come to you previously and said that you have, uh, rental registration ordinance on the books now. However, uh, it, it's a bit clumsy as far as administering it and there's some issues programmatically. And so one of the things we started looking at was just at its most basic level is how do we make that better? Uh, and we found ways that we can actually use the new iWork platform that we use for permitting and codes to, to manage it. So that part is fine. The next part that really involves you guys as a touch point now is what you want in the scope of that rental program. Do you want it to remain simply a rental registration program or are you interested in perhaps adding to it inspections? And if you are, as you've seen from previous correspondence from me, there's different levels that you can do that. You can look at it, uh, from a life safety level. You can look at it from a property maintenance level. You can look at it as deep as the, uh, uniform construction codes would allow you, uh, or some variation of all of those things. And so what I had put in your packets was really my first broad brush attempt at trying to capture, uh, some of the feedback that you were provided to me in the polls that I had given to you. So if you'll remember, I had polled council members and asked, uh, very specific questions about what you thought about rental programs and what you wanted to see and what you didn't want to see. And I did my best to try and take the majority of those comments and blend that into a draft ordinance. At the same time, what I did was looked around at what other communities have done recently as far as rental inspection programs, rental registration programs, to try and understand what was out there and are they working, are they not working, and what elements from them might we be able to use for ours. And so pooling all those things together, uh, I've created sort of a cleaned up draft of an ordinance. I do not expect that this is the final version of it. My expectation is that this gives us a good starting point to continue that discussion. Certainly, as you look through it, I'm hopeful that you'll look for specific things that you may have issues with. You may look at things and say, boy, I really like that. That, that's a good thing. Let's keep that. Um, what I would say is certainly there is no action on it tonight. Uh, my goal was to simply bring you back up to speed to let you know that I was continuing my efforts on it. Uh, and with this draft that you have in your packets now, uh, I'm sort of pushing it to you now for you guys to go through and read it, uh, get your questions together, reach out to me certainly if you have questions, uh, and then we can get back together and decide what needs to change.
Could it go through each of the committees for specific committee comments and recommendations?
Each of the committees?
Well, for example, we have, like, obviously, planning and engineering, but we have public safety, um, we have, um.
I mean, you could, there's some that it makes some sense. I don't know if you would put it through, like, public works and facilities probably wouldn't.
Right.
You know, water sewer is not gonna have much. So there may be some committees that you could earmark.
Commissions, a couple?
Certainly, um, as well as potentially, you know, engaging your planning commission. Uh, you know, they, they help you with, with planning things as well. Uh, it would be within their purview to take a look at it as well. Um, so what we can do, if that is the wish of council, I will sort of identify what committees I think are appropriate to take a look at that, and I will distribute it to them, uh, and solicit their specific feedback.
Yeah, let's track it that way, see how it.
Eric, in your discussion of the variations, I think that was very good.
Thank you.
Okay? Because we're gonna need variation in that when it comes to rental.
I thought what you had was, was really nice detail, really nice, something for us to start with. I think you did a really good job.
Yeah, I tried to make it as complete as possible, but, you know, understood that it was probably not gonna be the final product.
Okay. I guess we'll get back to councillor Hagberg for the next motion.
Consideration of a motion to approve a development plan for a license agreement including improvements to the vacant lot parcel located at two twenty-nine Carlisle Street.
They want a table.
Yeah, that's the one we're table.
Yeah.
Make a motion to table it.
I would make that.
Motion to table. Is there a second to the making of the table? All in favor, all in favor of tabling, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next.
Consideration of a motion to approve the recommendation of the borough engineer to accept the deed of dedication for Gateway Drive and related apparatuses with the public improvement bond release and to direct staff to prepare a maintenance bond.
So motion.
Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye, please?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Will that cost us any money? Do we have to give money back? How does that?
So when a developer does a project, they post a large amount of money as an improvements bond. What is being asked of you now is to reduce that improvements bond down to what the municipality's planning code says is appropriate, which is fifteen percent. We will now hold that for a period of eighteen months while we watch those improvements and make sure that the, you know, the road doesn't fall apart, the curbs don't crack, the pipes don't settle and have issues.
For the target shopping center.
No, this is for the little small stub street that is directly behind Sam's Club. It had previously existed in one configuration.
Got it.
Uh, they removed it and put it in a different configuration now as part of a subdivision process.
All right, thank you.
Motion carries, by the way.
Yes.
Councillor Hagberg?
Okay, let's see. Consideration of a motion to approve resolution thirteen thirty-nine to conditionally approve the preliminary and final subdivision plan for one oh six and one oh eight Fulton Street as recommended by the planning commission.
So motion.
I'm sorry?
No, it should be on there. For the planning commission's recommendation?
It's on the agenda. Is it on the agenda?
I have to go, I misunderstood you. I thought that.
It's on the agenda.
It's on the agenda, so we're good.
All right, I'll go up and get the resolution and go to sign that.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so we do have, we have the motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Please give me a second then.
Councillor Funk?
Councillor Eric?
Hey.
Councillor Hagberg?
All right. Consideration of motion to set public hearing date for the conditional use application received February fourth, twenty twenty-two for two oh nine to two thirteen Premrose LLC in coordination with council members' schedule and all parties involved.
Any second. So we received, uh, the third application, um, for conditional use approval. We need to schedule a hearing. That has to be scheduled within sixty days of, of, um, of February fourth, which is May third.
Okay.
So we'll have to coordinate everyone's schedule.
So the motion, once I receive a second, will be to allow staff to coordinate according to schedules. Is there a motion?
So motion.
A second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
That concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. We'll move on to the fire commission. Councillor Lockard?
Thank you, Mr. President. Request consideration of a motion to approve the, the recommendation of the fire chief to obtain quotes for a twenty twenty-two July fourth presentation on North Wilson Avenue and to solicit donations to offset the costs of the event.
Second. Chief, do you need to say anything or?
I don't, I'm here to answer questions.
It sounded, sounded pretty straightforward to me. Can you stretch your legs a little? I guess. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Get your bids, chief. Thank you. Thank you, councillor Lockard. We'll move on to the page four. That would be governance and policy, uh, committee items. Dr. Rupp?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would ask consideration of motion to approve the social media policy for non-uniform personnel.
So motion, Barb.
Discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye, please?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And the other motion is consideration of motion to approve the amended social policy, media policy for elected officials. You'll recall that we did approve this back in the fall, I think, November. And then in our committee, we discussed, uh, in the ordinance, it said, uh, three options of warning if you, if you disobey the, if you don't, we're supposed to accord the ordinance. And between step two and three, it had and/or, and we decided to take the and/or out, 'cause you could go to step three right away or if you go one, two, three. So the and/or still, sort of, wasn't necessary. So that's the only change in that.
Yeah. So motion.
We kept beheading in, right?
Right.
We kept beheading in?
Yes, we kept.
One digit per offense.
One, two, and three. It could be all three, it could be one, it could be two.
Or the whole arm.
It could be the whole arm, yeah.
All in favor?
Tell me that motion.
All in favor signify by saying aye, please?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Rupp. We will move into order and sewer committee. Asked, councillor Kress?
Consideration of a motion to approve the capital purchase of a new closed-circuit television, CCTV, camera through Co-Stars from A&amp;H Equipment at a cost of twelve thousand seven hundred and ninety-four dollars for the infiltration and inflow INI department.
Second. Any discussion?
What does it do? Well, I mean, I know it's, is, is this for going down the pipe?
Yes.
Televising lines. Got it.
All in favor signify with an aye.
Aye.
Any opposed with a nay? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Kress. We will move back to public safety. Councillor Lockard?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, request consideration of a motion to authorize the borough solicitor to formulate an ordinance and advertisement for the engine brake retarder prohibition as approved by the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation, PennDOT, and to post signs along York Street, High Street, Carlisle Street, Baltimore Street, Broadway, Frederick Street, Elm Avenue, and Myles Town Road.
Second.
So motion.
Sounds like there's no discussion needed.
Yeah.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, sir. Uh, under the category of other matters, is this more of a request for action?
Yes, it is, yes, it is a request for action. Uh, so we, uh, did not in the past have a specific process for borough council to assign new business to committees, which is pretty much envisioned in your, in chapter twenty-eight of your ordinances. So this is the first time you're seeing this, uh, and I'm listing three matters, uh, some matters that have come up. The first is a recommendation from me, which is a policy on board and com- commission appointment process, which I'm asking the governance and policy take up. Uh, and then there are two matters for public safety. One is, uh, recommended by Mr. Hagberg and it's a ordinance on street performers, and one came through from Mr. Rowland, which was an ordinance on motor scooters. Uh, and then the third part of this section is, uh, just being an open-ended, uh, request that you provide to us any other matters that you would like scheduled. So there's.
The first one would be the, uh, planning commission person, what the process is, how we go about that.
For all, all appointments.
Chuck, help me understand the ordinance on street performers. I've never seen any in our town.
Yeah, so some of the towns, well, that's true, but as we begin to, you know, as towns begin to revitalize and they start to have events, and they have the restaurants and all that, that some of the communities are allowing that outs, outdoor. It's the outdoor music and events, sort of the, uh.
Oh, it's not some, I'm envisioning something completely different. I'm envisioning somebody doing acrobats or something on the streets, not that.
I was picturing somebody on stilts.
Yeah, yeah.
Help me understand.
Yeah, no, it's just, they just, um, you know, some of the towns, like, you know, go to Boston, you go to some of the places and that it's there, it's allowed, but it's not amplified music. It's not, it's, right now it'd be considered illegal for us under it, right?
So if somebody wanted to play the banjo at the, someplace downtown, they couldn't?
In the square.
In the square, they couldn't? They could, they could.
I don't, I don't believe they, they'd have to get a, the permit and all. There's nothing set up for it that I could see.
So they just put some rules or regulations around that?
Right.
I don't think that's a bad idea. I mean, it's.
And I think this noise, the noise is still being discussed in the next round.
So on this motor scooter, are they self-owned motor scooters that they can drive anywhere within the town or?
Well, here's what I see, just, and I'm not even sure motor scooters is the right thing.
Electric.
But there's, yeah, they could be electric, they could be, I don't know, nuclear powered, I don't know. But it's people driving around on the street, most of them are younger children, on the sidewalks, every, every which way.
Right.
And my understanding of it was that, you know, you have to have a driver's license and it has to be a registered vehicle and, you know, it used to be mini bikes when I was a kid, that, you know, you weren't allowed to have them on the public street. But it seems to have moved into electric skateboards and electric bicycles and all sorts of stuff. And, and I think we need to put some sort of rules around it before somebody gets hurt and is looking for somebody to sue. That's my.
I mean, a lot of the cities have those, you just use a card or whatever GPS kind of thing and you can, it's an electric scooters.
Well, we even have people in electric wheelchairs use them as cars.
So, I mean.
Well, that was my question. I mean, there are people that drive, that have their wheelchairs. They would not, they would be able to use their wheelchairs, wouldn't they?
Not on the street as a car.
I've never seen anybody on the street. I mean, I've, I've seen them cross the street.
What, the electric wheelchair?
They've been on the street 'cause the sidewalks are too bad.
Well, that in itself is another issue, and you're correct.
Right.
Would we eliminate, wouldn't they be eliminated if you had to have, if you had to have an electric wheelchair? We wouldn't add that to this, would we?
No.
No.
Okay. But if you watch, when you're in the big city, they actually take those bicycles, those motor scooters, they go down the sidewalks and people, they push out of the way so they don't get hurt.
That kind of stuff.
I agree. Okay.
Time out. Right, right now we're asking to send it to these committees, so.
Right, yeah.
I think you just started the committee work, but, so I'm gonna.
Correct. Yeah, we don't wanna have, to Bill's point, we're not having the meeting here, it's just to, just to put a little definition around it. It's.
FYI, that's where it's heading.
Thank you.
Not normal vehicles that are on the road.
Now, just to remind you that you already have a dotted, a list that looks like this of what already is gonna go to committees, and this is just in addition to that.
In addition to, okay. And we'll continue to update that list.
Nan, is that list on, um, that system Eric has, I can't think what it's called, the, where we, we, we see that all the time, where we get like the, the meeting agendas and?
That, that's probably, you're probably thinking of Microsoft Outlook. I have like planning commission set up as a group where you get.
And I get agendas and potential, you know, meeting notices and whatever that ref, the document Nan's referring to, the things that we've requested committees to look at, that should be out somewhere where.
It could be on the borough council, uh, webpage at the website. So we could do that.
Just to keep it in front of us, 'cause your, your point's valid, you just can't keep putting stuff in the bucket.
Next one, station.
Or we need buy another bucket.
Okay, are there any requests to, uh, report anything from council committees or other public bodies at this time? Solicitor Shultis?
Is council, uh, wishing to take up a motion to amend the agenda?
That would be the time?
I could read the motion and someone could make it if that's.
Would you? Go ahead.
If that's easier.
Might be.
So.
Might be faster.
So in accordance with Act sixty-five, we have to take a motion to amend the agenda. So the motion should be, motion to amend the agenda, cons, to consider the status of the appeal of the pending business privilege tax litigation in the matter of Stabler versus Borough of Hannover.
Would a councillor like to echo that sentiment in form of a formal motion as read by our solicitors?
I would second, I would make the motion.
And I need a second.
Second.
Okay. Uh, so the motion specifically is to amend the, um, agenda, agenda as, all in favor amending the agenda? Please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Aye.
Or aye? Any opposed? Say nay or no. Motion carries.
So now, since this was not on the, uh, published agenda, we should open it up for public comment, uh, on the matter of the appeal of the pending business privilege tax litigation. So I'll, I'll leave that to you.
Okay. So what that means is we're going to have an additional public comment portion because what council just did is to, uh, change our printed agenda to make an addition at the last moment.
Because of timing.
Because of the required timing. And, and other issues surrounding it. So is there anyone would like to, uh, offer public comment to the issue at this point in time? In the room, sorry. Community, uh, community media, can you help me with anyone online who would like to comment?
Yeah, if you're joining us via Zoom, you can unmute yourself if you'd like to address council.
Note takers? Okay. We'll close the public comment portion and move on, I assume, with a matter[1734.22] Okay, we'll close the public comment portion and move on, I assume, with a matter of business reflecting the change. Is there a motion to be had?
I can read the motion, if someone will make it.
Certainly, what is your suggestion?
The motion to authorize Borough's, Borough's legal counsel to discontinue the Borough's appeal on the matter of Stabler versus Borough of Hanover.
I'd like to make that motion.
Counselor Rowland has made the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
I have a question, is this mainly to decide if we wanna file an appeal to continue the process? Does it lock us in to continuing one at this point, or just deciding to file the appeal?
The appeal's been filed, the motion is to discontinue the appeal.
And, and the associated legal spending with that?
What did you just say, Scott?
And the associated legal spending.
Yeah, additional spending.
That's correct.
Any comment from this side? Comment from this side?
So if you vote, what's, what's the motion again?
Discontinue.
Discontinue the.
So if you vote to continue.
We're gonna vote to continue or discontinue.
That would mean you're going to continue.
Yes.
And then, continue would mean we would find out if we're right or not.
Correct.
Barb, say that again, it's getting confusing down the descent.
Well, I think we could vote, we're gonna, wanna continue, or we wanna discontinue, just for clarity's sake.
Okay, we're gonna continue or discontinue, correct?
The motion is to continue the legal effort.
I thought it was a discontinue.
Discontinues the motion.
The motion is to discontinue.
Is to what?
Is to discontinue the appeal, so.
Discontinue.
If you're in favor of the motion.
Thank you.
That's what I was saying.
Okay.
Okay, calling the question, Secretary Felix.
I'm sorry. I'm still.
Okay, my question, so if you vote yes, you are saying that we are going to discontinue the legal action?
Discontinue the appeal, stop it, just drop it.
We are withdrawing ourselves, the matter is ended.
All right.
Makes sense? If you say no, we are continuing in the legal process that we are currently in.
Yes.
Everyone good? Secretary Felix, roll call, please.
Mrs. Funk?
Mrs. Funk says to discontinue the appeal.
Mr. Greenhold?
Yes.
Mrs. Greenhold?